Is what is? What's your sister on do for my?
Project manager.
You know Claire?
Yeah.
We should still have a resume over.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Alright, call this meeting to order at six oh one P M for committee as a whole meeting. Roll call, Scott.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Brittany.
Here.
Myself here, John is absent. Can I get a motion to approve committee gene- meeting agenda?
All motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next, uh, is that right? Okay, student staff recognition, nothing, right? Okay. Sixty thirty, sixty ninety per day planning. See if there's any questions there? So it's just you and I going through the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is our homecoming dance with Northwood's tour just the pep?
It's just Sunday Springs.
Oh.
Yeah, the pep rally is with.
With.
The dudes.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, anybody else have anything on that?
My kid was pretty excited about the fire prevention day.
Yeah, they had a lot of great information, we were able to sneak down there and kids really enjoyed it.
Yeah.
They did a great job putting that on for them.
Wait this long, I can do that on my phone even. Next, so is this what's next then?
Yep.
Alright, you are up, sir.
Alright, I'll keep it short and sweet too, but, um, but one, Jason Plante, Mark and Johnson, we'll see you guys now. I think, what was it, July that we were in here?
It was.
And then we disappeared into a cocoon and we thought we'd better come back and at least tell you what we've been doing, so you know that we've been doing something. So we had a little kind of pre-kickup meeting in August, um, then the group came up at the end of August, so the engineers and architects spent, um, about half of a day or two going through all the nooks and crannies and skeletons that are in all the closets and all that kind of stuff. And so we're not done with the report, but we thought we'd just kind of come in today, kind of show you what it's gonna look like, feel like, kind of give you a status update. The goal of everything is that by the end of the month for your tw- twenty-seventh meeting, is that it?
Yeah.
The twenty-seventh meeting will come back, we'll have the full building analysis done with pricing, priorities, all that kind of stuff, right? The next step after that will be going through me with teachers and staff about space needs. Alright, so we're gonna evaluate the building first, then we'll say, hey, you know, where are we missing, what do we have, what's not working? Then we'll, after that, we'll create options for that, so you have kind of the do-nothing, here's your building maintenance, here's kind of your pipe dreams, then we'll start combining and looking for options. So it'll be the, the first step though is kind of the, the building one-on-one, if you will, so. Um, and we'll just kind of click through, we're not gonna go through this in detail, but really when we come through, we look at everything starting with the site, and we'll start, uh, identifying.
Sorry?
Nope.
Good grief.
There you go.
I wasn't doing it at first.
Alright, we'll go through the site, we'll start identifying any, any issues, this, that, things, that, things. Then I'll go into the next page there, um, is kind of the condition of the pavement. We'll go through and do an analysis, we've done an analysis for all the roof structures, when they were done, when they need to be redone, all that kind of good stuff. And so go through every kind of portion of that, um, in the study, gets to the age of the different additions that you've done over the years. Then there's a map that gives you kind of what all the rooms are, you know, what room one-on-one is, what room one-on-two is, all that type of thing. And then from there, some flooring plan analysis. That will start saying, hey, bad carpet in here and bad tile over there, this is good, that's bad, all that type of thing. So that will start, um, digging into kind of that area. There's a structural analysis, um, obviously I think we all know there's a little bit of concern about some stone load type thing. So we'll talk about, go through that, those types of analysis. Then we'll wrap up with mechanical, electrical and plumbing, um, so you have all those types of things all kind of broken down. And then, from there, a bunch of pictures that correlate back to, um, areas of need and stuff like that, so there'll be pictures of, cracked floors or whatever the scenario is, right? And then at the end of it, we'll come up with the pricing, and the pricing will be broken down into those same categories, but also a one to three-year need, a three to five-year and then a five to seven-year need, so you can kind of say, if you did nothing, here's the stuff, planning-wise, maybe we have whatever, two hundred thousand dollars worth of maintenance over the next couple of years of stuff that we think you need to do, and kind of, kind of use it at that plan. So that will be kind of the, the building analysis portion of things, right? And then, uh, like I said, after that, we'll get together with a group of, um, people, teachers, we gotta identify that with Peter and the leadership team. Start talking about space needs and all those types of things, that will create options from there. Then ultimately, you know, at some point, um, we'll start that in November, so let's say, November, December, we'll kind of come back and have another conversation, so let's say by the end of the year for sure, we'll have different options laid out, broke out, that type of thing. Um, and that's probably the time that the board will, I mean, will go through everything in detail then. But that's probably one you guys will start up the grappling with, is there a referendum in the future, what that might be, if there is or isn't. If there is, you know, should we go through the, the community survey process, a little bit, so all those kind of questions and walk you through. So there's, uh, two referendum dates next year. So on the quickest, um, obviously is April, so for April, we'd have to be a January resolution date. I don't, I can't speak for you guys, I don't know if that's, I mean, that seems pretty quick.
It's gonna be a pretty tight term.
Yeah. Um, so I was never kind of in the mindset that it was gonna go that quick, 'cause I think, um, based on past two, three years, we really want to spend some time, talk with the community about whatever the solution is, right? So if it's November, if you guys decide to do anything, um, we have to August. So that gives us a lot of time, so maybe by the end of the year, you guys kind of start having some vision of what might be, right? Then we can go and do a community survey during a good time of the year, we don't wanna do Christmas, we don't wanna do the summertime, so, you know, that, uh, February, March, you know, kind of timeframe works really well, 'cause then we can get those results back. We can have community engagement, we can go through results, we can tweak whatever, you know, if it comes back and whatever options we're thinking was a good idea and it tests bad, then we know we gotta re- It gives us time to kind of redo whatever we got to pick them up, right? So it's kind of just super big picture. Obviously, there's no mandate that you go to referendum, and you could take that as a, as your maintenance plan, and that's your maintenance plan for the next couple of years. Or it could be, hey, we're gonna go in April of twenty-seven. You know, so we got to follow the January, to where it was, so, um, but just a big picture, those are kind of some data points for you guys to kind of consider. So that's really just kind of the quick high-level update, I wanted to make sure you guys did think we left and went in a vacuum. R B A and the, and the engineers have been doing quite a bit of stuff. The summary of the, the report so far is, um, the group up here's done a really good job maintaining stuff. There isn't any huge, like, oh my gosh, moments in the study. There's certainly little things here and there, and I mean, little things add up, but it's not like there's, oh my god, your whole mechanical system's gotta be, you know, there's none of those kind of big aha moments. So that's good, so the, the maintenance part isn't a, isn't a huge, huge number. And so I think, you know, you do probably have the opportunity that if there's a space needs of some sort with some maintenance stuff, you know, and a referendum's not, you know, I guess it doesn't have to be a twenty million dollar solution, right, so you've got some options, I think, which is good. You know, a lot of times when maintenance, you know, uses up eighty percent of your bonding capacity, then that makes it tough to pass a referendum, 'cause nobody sees or feels the maintenance stuff. So I think there's opportunities depending on what needs you guys have kind of coming up to maybe craft something that's reasonable, that's, you know, physically responsible and, and still maybe has some good solutions for you, so. That's kind of the, the big picture update. Kind of was super quick and not too much detail, but any questions or thoughts or?
So it's no load one, the structural one, I just had a question on real quick, um, that's part of the original building, I believe, for the most part. I mean, I kind of went into both. Was it just never designed to hold that much load, or?
Well, I think if, and I'm not a structural engineer, but I think what happens over time, and Aaron and Jamie kind of mentioned it today, is that, code frequently changes. So, um, it probably was within code at one point, and code's just changing, now it's not.
Yeah.
So it doesn't necessarily mean that you've got a huge structural issue, um, it just means that it's different than what it was back then. Does mean that if we do some work, we probably have to address it, if we were in that area kind of thing, um, but it doesn't necessarily mean like, hey, you got a structural issue and in ten years that walls are falling down or anything kind of like that, so to speak, right? So, um, I think it's more these times have changed from, from the, from the different additions to where we are today. More so than, than anything else.
Well, I know that's the area we had the problem, right, so.
I think there's some. I think there's some flashing challenges, flash is another area that, uh, flashing details have changed dramatically over the last, like, twenty years, and so some of the, moisture cracking issues that we see, a lot of times are, hey, it was flash, I was, and then back then, and now if you look at it like, oh my god, I can't do it that way anymore, so. We get into that, yeah.
'Cause that, that's, I mean, you, you're talking the structure over here, but then what, what you're getting into, Jason, is more so with their, with their high school.
Gym.
Gym.
And how things were done there, um, some stuff may have to be addressed sooner than later, so.
So, yeah, good question, I think, you know, we're going to Sparta right now and they have a structural issue, and it was, it was such that that had to come down because it was an issue that was, you know, kids' safety in mind there.
Are we looking at to beef that up more, just more bracing, most likely?
Not sure what the exact solution will be, I think we'll work through that detail, yeah.
Alright.
Yep.
The, uh, architects and engineers, we met with them briefly today and they're just kind of going through some, yeah, there, there was no huge concern around that area, so.
I think a do-nothing thing is still, and I will have to go through and really analyze that part though, but it wasn't like the.
Well, being that we had an issue there, and we did have some sagging, it supposedly went back to normal.
Right.
But, you know, that's a lot of snow load, post-nally we have the, um, I don't know, are the, do we have the, um, solar panels in that area?
So i- in that specific area, no.
Okay.
Ballasted there off, uh, different directions, not in that specific area, so.
'Cause that's just gonna load the more.
Right. Yeah, absolutely, a- and I will say, when, when, when they were here, that was, that was a, a concern that was brought up to us, and this did happen, you know, so.
Yep.
The solution for that, is that what will be part of the October twenty-seventh?
Yeah. Yeah, if we think that there's a need to brace it or do whatever, that'll be in, in that report, is part of the pricing and what that solution is. I'll say that some of it might depend on, maybe not with that, I was gonna say, if there's an addition or something like that, maybe there's, reason that that will catapult that to the, you know, to be in a, a higher priority, 'cause maybe code requires to do, but knowing where that issue was, I don't, I don't think any addition would generate, you know, that kind of response, but.
Right, well, it was a record snow year too.
Yeah. So, but yeah, they'll be on the shopping list of maintenance stuff.
You guys have any questions? Well, thank you.
Wow, easy.
Yes.
Sound good. We'll see y'all on twenty-seventh. I just, I have no idea how this, like, the first two times I came up here, I was down in, you know, I was down in Prairie de Shield or somewhere, which is obviously like a complete opposite direction of here, and then we came up here, and now I was in Spooner all day yesterday or today, and I'm in Spooner all day on the twenty-seventh, and like, that just never happens. I appreciate the timing, you're bored meetings, it's really perfect.
Awesome, alright, thanks.
Cool, good seeing you guys.
Thanks.
See you guys.
Alright, employee sick bank use.
You want me to talk?
It's a committee, it's a committee meeting, Steve.
Um, so essentially, after talking to many of the employees in the district, I, I think this was all included, probably in the packet, um, we'd like to see some changes to the emergency sick leave bank. Um, as of right now, you have the current policy, but you can't contribute it to the bank unless you've been here for three years, which is, uh, twenty, takes out twenty-five percent of our employees with the high turnover we've had lately, so that eliminates twenty-five percent of the people that can't participate in it. So we're asking that that be removed along with the fact that you have to contribute to the bank to be able to use from the bank. We feel that if someone needs it, that we are willing to give to it, um, without a stipulation that we expect that person to give. Um, and then we would like to see a process developed to officially opt into the bank. Whether it's at the end of the year, we receive a thing that says this is how much sick time you have left, how much would you like to contribute, here's what you can contribute, um, but a more formal process for that to happen. So I think you have it, but I submitted a list of employees who signed, and some signed after, um, along with, I forgot to give it to her till today, but, two letters from people, there's about four or five people that I've found in the district that have contributed. As of right now, the rest, it sounds like, has probably retired or moved on. Just kind of asking for you to consider making some changes.
Is it time for dialogue and questions, so?
How many, I was meant to look to get the exact, how many sick days? They get five per year, and how many can roll over to the next year?
They get, they get twelve per year, so the brand-new people start out with four, and then they earn an additional one each month, up to twelve in May. And then each year after that, we all get an additional twelve at the beginning of the year. The max that we can accrue is a hundred and forty days. And say you were at your hundred and forty for, like, I come in this year at a hundred and forty.
Yeah.
I still get my twelve, so I can use those twelve this year before I cut into my one forty, but at the end of the year, if I have a hundred and fifty-two left, I only get to. And that, and then there's, um, when people retire, if they've been here fifteen years and hit, um, fifty-five, and they go into Wisconsin retirement, they can have that rolled over into a sick leave bank.
And we're at, the bank is at the two hundred?
At the two hundred, right.
So current, the ba- bank is maxed out right now, is that what you're saying?
Right, but we still, the max usable days, pardon me if I'm wrong, the max usable days is two hundred, but, say someone has not put in, or they haven't put in their, their five, they can still put in so they can be a participant. It's still that, that max is still at two hundred days. If that makes sense.
But nothing would've ever taken out until it goes below that, basically.
I mean, it's still coming out of them.
If I gave one day, I would still lose that hour, but the bank wouldn't bill.
Correct.
As much.
Right, yeah.
But you're kind of opting in, or you're, you're contributing.
Right.
The number didn't go up, but you still gave your days, so you're part of it.
And then, um, I think it's that we have to have participated for five years before we can actually, um, put in a request to, to participate if we need, need the days.
Yeah, and so, like I mentioned, the twenty-five percent, that's people who haven't been here three years to even contribute, when you're looking at people who haven't been here, well, essentially eight years, you're looking at a larger percentage of people who aren't eligible to use this. So that would be the first, like, the main ask, the second part of that would be if this is like some concrete thing that we can't change. Like, to me, the word bank is like, okay, if I give her access to my savings account, she can use it. Then we, I would like to see the district have some sort of donation thing, like, I think of it like, I watched the school board meetings and last month, somebody came in and said, here's five hundred dollars to delinquent lunch accounts, and we don't say, well, you can only give this to someone else who is, who has paid on someone else's lunch account. So if we could develop some sort of donation thing, if it's not the bank, that we could give when people are in need. 'Cause if I'm willing to give up my sick days, it seems weird to me that we can't get those if we'd like to, with someone else's in need.
You have that just for like vacation, you can donate your vacation?
To another person, in the past, we've allowed people to, um, donate the personal days.
Personal days?
To someone, but not the sick days.
And that's not in the, in policy, right? 'Cause I didn't, I couldn't find that.
'Cause that's usually a, was on a special request, to put that in.
But that hasn't been.
I guess my initial thing's like, meaning this, is like, even just looking at the three years. I think it's reasonable to keep it that three years, so that that person can like build up their own sick bank. Before like, just donating to this, so that, and then they have like, showing a little bit of longevity of employment at the school. Do, like, are we actually convening these meetings with the high school staff, elementary staff?
We actually have not had anybody eligible or put in a request for the sick leave bank for several years.
Okay.
So the last time we did, yeah, we had a committee put together that, that went over the regulations. Went through the process. And I think, I shouldn't say, my, my assumption is that originally the thought process, you know, by not making it immediately available to people is, to establish some time within the district, and it becomes a financial, can be a financial burden on the, on the district when we're giving away the sick leave days.
Couldn't it also save money for the district, if she gave a day and I took it, that's, she, she gets paid quite a bit more than I do, so.
Right, but if it's vice versa.
If the person is taking, the person that's taking it is less, so it's like hard to say, it could, it could cost the district money, 'cause it could save the district money too.
Right, it's a catch-twenty-two there, but it's also if you had no sick days, and we're already paying for a substitute, and then if we're doing, using the sick leave days, then that becomes a.
This is budgeted in already, everybody's sick leave is budgeted, isn't it?
It's not, it's not part of the budget.
Could we allow, like, they can't donate till they're at the three years? But, if, like, genuine, you know, circumstances, if they're under that three years and something happened, let's put up, you know, a request in that the committee could meet on. And like, I mean, there's the days allowed, like, the five days versus obviously not like, maybe the sixty days, 'cause they.
Right.
Because, you know, life happens and we still can have some compassion and things for people.
And what brought about this, I'm just.
Um, I mean, mainly, it hasn't been used in years, and so we started asking around who even works in this building that's could pull from it. And like I said, I think I found four or five people, I didn't obviously ask every single person, but the majority of people that I asked, there's not many people who could actually utilize this at this point. So whether we say, okay, those five people can utilize this bank, or however, you might know, we haven't exactly remember how many are fully vested in this. Um, but the people who are vested, I mean, a few of them have said, we want this to be utilized by our coworkers and staff, because, it's hard to say when you don't, when you aren't inside this building, but we take care of each other actually very greatly, so I think that is probably, a big part of it, is that I look at it like, if I'm giving something away, I've always, like, lived by the motto of, it's not my decision of how that person uses that money, time, gift, whatever, that is their thing, so if it's on, if it's in my heart and things, to give that, that.
To give freebie?
Yeah.
What if I don't expect it back?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Clearly, anything else that you guys wanna add?
I see you underlined, can you clarify this, the maternity may not.
I don't know who did that, somebody did that while it was in the teacher's lounge, I don't know, they didn't put their.
And to me, that's just, just genuine circumstances of the pregnancy, like emergencies or.
Yeah, it would, it would go above and beyond, and the adult age.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure who wrote that note on there, they didn't, 'cause that was just in the.
Right, right, so, that, that's why it's there, 'cause it would be some exception.
Yeah, exactly.
Hi, I'm Michelle Egan Missbauer, and I'm a reading teacher for Title One, and I've been here for six years. And even though I've been out with, with this and stuff, I would still have time that I would like to, almost even donate and not expect it back at this point in my career, because, um, if there's people in need, I'd like to help, and, I've enjoyed being a member of this school community, and I wanna give back. So I would ask, if you decide something, you leave it open for debate, to come back, and we can share more ideas.
Yeah, like I said, even if it's not necessarily changing this family, or this, this, uh, policy, but to have, let us somehow donate to the people that need it. Whether it's developing a new policy or what that looks like, so.
And you said nobody's used this in. Might be one of those things where you take it on a case-by-case basis, you wanna.
Well, that's what it is already.
It is, it is a, a case-by-case, but I, I think what we're getting at is the access.
You can't request it. Yeah.
Is, is what's being requested, right, because that, that's what's the barrier here, so.
I mean, like, hoping something new is possible, if you don't utilize that, that's up to those people, but, mm, right now, I know there's, a lot of people besides myself who would've been here if they could have that to support.
Well, the thing is, like, right now, we're at two hundred days, and whatever you give is just gonna go away from that two hundred.
Well, not necessarily to that bank, if we could make it open for debate. Establish a separate one, if that's frozen because others own it, we understand that.
Yep, and, and, and I, I appreciate it, I, I would, I would hesitate to, to start another one, 'cause then it would just create, it creates more confusion. I, I mean, that's, that's just my thoughts on this matter, I think we should take a look at, or, or at least have a conversation on how this is utilized, so. And that, that's what you guys are bringing forward here, so, absolutely.
Is it the fact that you don't, not many people know about it, is that why they're not?
Well, like I said, twenty-five percent of people haven't, aren't even within their third year of being here.
Yeah.
So even if they do know about it.
But you said there was only five above that, so that, are those other people just aren't putting into the bank, is that what it is?
After three years, you have to give one day a year for five years, so eight years essentially.
Is it that people don't know about that, or is it they just aren't doing it?
Well, it's in the handbook, and we all sign off on the handbook that we read it, so, and there's an opt, um, sheet from the handbook that we would turn that in and say, I would like to donate a day of my sick leave, blah, blah, blah. I have not received, in the last three years, I have not received any, so, and I have not made a effort to remind people either, um, so.
Right, and we're not faulting, you just.
I'm not saying that too either, but it's, we all read.
Creating a more formal process, other than, here's the handbook on the first of school, like, this is your deadline to opt into this.
Right, so. And speaking for teachers, that's probably one of the last things we have time to do at the, at the beginning.
I agree.
And just like all, just like all of us.
So if you want us to, to remind you, that's another thing on that.
Gotta discuss it though.
But, but I can say that, uh, it's pretty bad where people can fill out a sheet and say they wanna donate.
No, I, I meant, is there a time where you can change your benefits or anything like that?
Oh, just overall.
Overall.
Yes.
Maybe that would be a time to put that in that part of it, maybe?
I don't wanna add that to what I already have to put out for the, for the insurance.
But, but it's, it's not what you're communicating, is what, what it is though, so, but I hear.
Cause it would be a different, whole different bracket in there.
Well, thank you ladies.
Yep.
Thank you for listening.
Is it possible, um, if there's a break down or if it's an emergency day, could we be able to put a donate?
Uh, I can ask to, so the, the previous district I was in had operated a bank and I can ask how they operate that some. And if there's a way that Skyward can help that process.
So if you can have that in there and they look at their employee access, if they could see.
Right, yeah, that, cause that's, that's stuff that we, we haven't addressed, cause this is our second year with Skyward tracking absences and whatnot, and this hasn't come up, so.
There is a box that says invested or fully something also, and I have not checked those for the ones that are invested in the five days, but.
Yeah, so, stuff that we can look into, so.
Okay, moving on, new shooting machine. So.
All right, well, this, yeah, so there's a couple of things going on here. Last year it came up, uh, that uh, we wanted to try to take advantage of a, a plan to trade in the old shooting machine and get a new one. However, the old shooting machine was not owned by the district. Things have changed and that's where you have that uh, donation agreement that's there. So what would have to happen in this is that we would have to accept that donation uh, from SSYBA and then uh, move forward with the quote that's provided, that quote does take into account the trade in of that shooting machine.
So we aren't having, we don't have two of them then?
We, that's, we, we would absolutely not have room for two.
That's, that was my concern when I saw it, cause I'm like, wait a minute, if we keep getting these things, where would you put them?
Well, like, no, yes, no, it would, it would be accepting this uh, with the agreement uh, that it would go towards a new machine and the, and the school district would own that machine, but could still be made available for SSYBA.
And then that would be purchased with the Merzrookie.
That is correct, that is correct.
Um, do we need to act on this sooner than later, or?
No, it, the, the quote has a thirty day um, grace, so, yeah, we've got some time. You, you do have quorum here, you can certainly act on the donation, so it gets done, um, or you can act on all of it, or.
Looks like this court expires on the twenty-fifth of this month, so it's gonna be before next meeting.
So, so for what the next week?
So.
Well, on a motion, you can.
I'll motion to accept the donation.
And we don't have to, are we still doing the, go ahead, sorry, you seconded?
Yeah.
Alright. Are we still doing the, okay, we don't need to okay that for buying it though, we.
Uh, the.
Because that's going through Merzrookie.
Right, which has already been agreed upon by the coaches.
Okay, so, so we don't really need to take action on that?
So you, you can, the, it would still be an affirmation that the board accepts that, because I mean, it, it's gonna be district property, even though the funding is going through Merzrookie, you're okaying that, um, that decision by the, the coaches, so that makes sense.
Did you wanna add that to the, to it or not?
Yeah, so all the coaches across all the sports have agreed to it and no one's, then I will motion it.
Go ahead, do it.
Go ahead, so just, yeah, so I will motion to accept the donation and then motion to purchase the new, um, shooting machine.
So you'd make your motion.
Shooting. Ready to hear your second again? Okay, any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, alright, moving on.
My mother was very concerned when she saw a shooting machine on the agenda, she saw.
Well, I was for a second, I'm like, oh, are we starting a shooting club?
Even like trying to spin it out and the title on the top is for guns.
I know. That's called shooting, yes, yeah, so, anyhow.
Camp Chaperone compensation.
Alright. Uh, so a uh, letter was proposed and, and brought forward just to consider compensation for uh, overnight trips, I, I know that we have the Ernie Swift camp as well as, um, the uh, you have senior trip, you also have Wolfridge, uh, that students go to.
Senior hocken.
Yeah, so.
I didn't realize they weren't being compensated.
They weren't and aren't, and I will tell you that reaching out to a few different districts that operate in very similar manners, there is no stipend provided, so.
Except for Northwoods, supposedly?
Yes.
Or do they only stipend just for that specific thing?
Um, I think, I'm not sure on if it's that specific thing or if it's across the board.
But they kinda host that one already, is that, I mean, this particular camp?
Yes and no, uh, they also, it, every district runs differently and I will say that, how, how they operate in some of their compensations is a little bit different than what I've seen elsewhere, anyway, regardless, it, it's some, something that was brought to our attention for consideration, um, and I think it's based off of Northwood, like I said, operating in a few different districts, I, um, two of them in particular that I've worked with haven't seen that. And I know one of them goes to Wolfridge, another one does something very similar to the Swift camp, so.
Yeah, if you stipend for this, then you got overnight for chaperoning for trips and everything else that we've never really.
Yeah, like the senior class trip, depending on how much money they have, it could be an overnight, it could be a two night, it could be.
Could be a week.
But the difference is this is a requirement though, right, this trip that they have to take, that I think this is like a state requirement for the, that grade, isn't it?
No.
No.
It is not.
No. Oh, I thought it was, okay, okay.
These are additional learning opportunities and I think there's, there's great things that come from it, uh, from both this and as well as Wolfridge. But it is, it is not a requirement, so.
I, I, yeah, I'm just not for it, cause this is gonna open up everything. And that's, you, you're, you're gonna, we're gonna spend a lot of money then, not just at this camp.
So I think we could even start small and privilege, coaches bringing athletes on the state.
Yep.
And, and that's, that's where I would say that would be, there, there is a difference and I think that, that goes into the coaching contract and their, and their compensation, that, that is inherently included into this, or into their pay. The, this however, there's nothing, so.
Ernie Swift and Wolfbridge, is there different planning that goes into those two events, I mean, Wolfbridge, we're not coordinating, I don't think, we're coordinating volunteers and things for.
Right, it, you, you're correct, it, it's not as rigorous as far as the amount of planning that goes into it. But, but there, there's, you know, you're still there and you're supervising and, and whatnot, so.
And it's not a requirement of that teacher to be taking it on, but they have been doing it faithfully for several years.
That's correct. Right, that's that kind of, um, and, and that's where I've seen elsewhere, if, if you're involved with that, great, you're pretty much committed to that or you're at least part of it in some fashion, so.
With this one, it's, I feel like it's hard too, because we're, we're coming into right away the beginning of the year and they've already decided that it's going to be a thing, so if you're a new fifth grade teacher, then.
It's a promise, yeah, so. Cause that, what was it, the second week of school?
Yeah, I couldn't believe how quickly it was already over, I'm like, oh geez, well.
That's not, so, at least with Wolfridge, yeah, it's gonna be in, in April this year. It's gonna be in spring, we, we, we had transitioned it to springs and, um, moved it up to sixth grade, so.
Anybody else have anything on this or any other? Things to say about it? I don't know, I'm, I'm just not bored myself, that's my opinion, I won't be here at the next meeting, so I'm giving you my opinion now.
Alright, sounds good.
Alright, next, dishwasher purchase.
So, once again, I, the, these were two quotes that I had and then I, I don't know Brad, if you wanna kinda weigh in on, on what you saw involving this.
Yeah, I, it is a pretty old machine, it's older than what you think, it's probably nineties.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just opening up this other one here, although. Yeah, they're all the same. But I don't know if this one has a booster.
Yeah, so, so basically what, what was going on is, is uh, two different ways of testing the temperature, uh, because with, with dishwashers in, in institutions like ours, there's two di, two different ways to ensure um, sterilization of, of uh, plates and utensils. It's either by heat, so it has to reach a certain temp or higher, or it has to use specific chemicals to, to.
Chlorine.
Yeah, to, to uh, clean them. The preference is to avoid use, use of chlorine as much as we can, cause of, A, there's storage, there's issues with that, but then the usage, long-term usage and whatnot, um, so reaching that temp and, and there's two methods of, of checking the temp, one is actually having a sensor on a plate that goes, goes through a cycle and the other one is, is a heat strip that you place on the outside of the washing basin and, um.
You put it on a dish.
What's that?
You put that on a dish too.
Okay, so, you can explain this, you're far better at it than I am.
Well, they, they, I, I, I hate our health inspectors and they like to change things and they like to make names for themselves, cause they're trying to push these electronic discs that are garbage. We can never get them to pass unless we turn up that temperature over to two hundred degrees. At the plate needs to be a hundred and sixty degrees in order to sanitize. I've had them before where I put it up to almost two hundred degrees, it passed a hundred and eighty degree test strip, like no problem, but that darn disc barely read one sixty, it was like one fifty-nine point nine, which is closer minus five percent what the disc is allowing. But, and I'm like, and I've been there with them, like, yeah, you drop this disc, it's no good. You do anything with this disc, it's no good, where are you calibrating it, oh, you put oil in hot water to make sure it's good, okay. Can you, and then what, what if it isn't, then you gotta get a new one. But anyways, the real only way that we do it is with test strips, you buy them, stick them on a plate, you run it through, it turns black or if it gold, the black turns to red orange, it's good to go. Um, I gave Jenna a thing of them, um, because I ran her tester, it didn't pass the one eighty, but it passed the one sixty, no problem. But the disc wasn't even near, it was like a one fifty-one.
And it did pass the inspection this week when this inspector was there.
Yeah, cause she had the stickers, yeah, so, um, and that, and that's the key there, I mean, it's, it is passing, um, dish machines are gonna get more expensive, I mean, we just took another three percent increase on that one that you saw there. So you gotta figure that's outdated already.
Is this installation cost also?
Nope.
That's just the machine?
No, I guarantee you that's no installation cost.
That's what I was thinking, I couldn't see anything.
That doesn't include a booster heater too, which you also need a new booster. Our booster's gonna cost you anywhere from, uh, my cost on a booster, probably what they're gonna add, you're gonna need six to eight thousand dollars more for a booster, so.
Did we find out how many racks?
So, I, I will say that the, the capacity that they have is pretty close to the capacity that they're operating here, so. Um, and, you know, I, I.
We'll, we'll, we'll agree to disagree on this one. So, I, yeah, my, I, I mean, you've got Washburn, they run on a single rack, both their buildings. Uh, Melon runs out on a single rack, from and run, I believe on a single rack. I have a, a NOKA K through twelve, which has over a thousand students, runs on a single rack, low temp machine. So it can be done and the way that the lady is washing the dishes here, I mean, she's scrubbing the plate, I mean, she's not just bringing them out, putting a tray and throwing them through, she's actually scrubbing every single little thing, and she doesn't need to, especially, cause nothing's that dried on. If there's something dried on or cooked on, then you'd have to worry about it, both the plates here or the trays here, they're scooped on, ate, and they're cleaned probably within twenty minutes at the latest. So it, there's a lot of unnecessary work that needs to be done there, I mean, I know she's trying to do a good job and everything, but it's a waste a little bit there, but, um, but yeah, if you wanna stick with high temp, you'd have to go with, with the setup that's there, cause I don't know, I didn't look real good at the table setup to see if it'd be shortened to put a single unit in there, you go to a single unit with a booster heater, you could be probably about four grand under the quote you were given with a booster heater. But, yeah, you're talking with a booster heater, you're probably gonna be around the twenty grand. Mark, twenty to twenty-four.
And, right, and, and I guess, you know, a, as I think about it, we, we had that option for the grant last year and that's where I said, yeah, we need to act on it.
Yep.
Uh, and since that fell through, now it's that true question that we have to answer, are we gonna try to find a solution and our objective is to replace it this year, or is it, we're not?
After seeing it, what do you think of, like maintaining what we have? It can be maintained, there's very few, there's a few parts on it that would be hard to find, but um, there are parts that really don't go bad very often. One being a shut off valve, I was able to find one for another CMA, it was actually just a door unit, takes the same one, but it took me a while, but I did find it. But otherwise, most of the components are still available today. I haven't really, you know, there's a few things that are leaking on it that, I don't know if Everly's coming on and actually checking the machine every once in a while or not, but they should be taking care of that kinda stuff, cause the, the one vacuum breaker was there leaking like crazy, that's why you get it all that white. Well, it's leaking out and so I'm hoping they're coming every once in a while, at least check out the machine, but I don't know if they are or not. So, I mean, it can be, um, yeah, I have machines out there from the seventies that are still good, and still have parts available, very few that are. So, I, I, in my opinion, I'd let it go for a little bit longer, I mean, it's passing, it's, yeah, I, the only thing I'd be worried about is the booster heater, heater and how aligned it is inside.
Yeah.
And if it's something that we just need to get a new booster versus a whole new machine, because the machine doesn't heat, well, it heats the water in the tanks and the rinse tank a little bit, but as far as it's sanitized, it's that booster heater alone. Um, you could start with that, get a booster heater replaced if, but, you know, in order to figure that out, you have to take the element out, see what it looks like inside that tank.
So I, I, I will say that Jenna's been frustrated and, and saying that the booster here, she tries to kick it up and then there's something and she might.
Pops it.
Yeah, saying it's too hot, so, so there, there's definitely things that, that we need to take a look at, I, I guess. I, I guess the big, one of the big reasons why I bring this up in, in crunch time is we're developing the budget for, or we're trying to put a finalization on the budget for this year. And, uh, do we put it in the budget or we don't? You know, we can plan it in the budget and if we use it, great, if we don't, don't. But that, that's where it comes down.
I, I would plan for twenty-four grand.
Put a booster heater where our current unit be compatible?
Yes, with the new one. It's a separate unit from it. All it does is go in line with the bike.
Yeah, but they.
Yep, definitely can be with the new unit. So you could just replace the booster right now, wait till the machine totally goes or is to the point where we don't wanna fix it anymore.
Hmm.
Um, and then replace the machine and not have that booster.
Okay. So. So if it's all right, we'll, we'll build this into the budget and we'll continue to look at it. Other questions or things that we should be taking a look at?
Does anything change, like electrical supply wise, like you just plug and play?
Well, I mean, the only thing that might change is the plumbing fitting area and the drain are gonna be a little bit different.
It's not like we have to pull a new.
No, you should not have to pull the wiring and everything. Everything's same. If anything, it's, they're more efficient now than what they were, so they won't use as much electricity. Um, the big reason I'd like you to hold off on the ADS forty-four, that quote you got from them, is ADS is actually coming out with a three-point-oh high efficient conveyor.
Mm-hmm.
That matches the newest efficiency and supposedly it's gonna be the Caspial, I haven't seen it yet, I have a hard time. When I see it, I might say no.
Yeah, right.
Because it might be a maintenance nightmare, you know, I, I don't know until then, so.
Right, and, and, and with that, just understanding that, you know, we don't purchase these things very often, so.
No.
If this is a better thing, so.
Yeah, and like I said, that's, you know, this is probably, I would say this is from the nineties.
Yeah, I wanna say it was one of Pat's first years and it started in ninety-six, I'm thinking, it seems like we talked about maybe ninety-eight.
Was it? It was in that timeframe, anyway, so, okay, sounds good. So we will plan for this in the budget and we will continue to get more information and uh, see where this is.
Okay, okay. All right, next one, policy updates, first reading group, volume thirty-four, number two, group two. So, with this employee sick leave stuff, do we need to like, hold off on it till we make a decision on the bank thing or?
I, I don't think this goes into the bank, if I remember correctly, I'm sorry, I'm bringing it up again here, so. Uh, so the, um, goodness gracious, uh, the thirty-four thirty-two and the forty-four thirty-two do not. Uh, but it's just how, how you're using that and what each one counts for. And this, this is actually a good opportunity for us to get all of our policies and um. And uh, handbook in, in sync, so to speak.
Does sick leave in that cover maternity?
Yes.
Regular sick leave but not emergency, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And I did find a couple of things as I was reading through today that um, didn't get updated when Pete and I were working on this and he was putting the policy in, all of a sudden. Things weren't there that were in the ones we printed off and we were going off of and I think we all was going through some updates while we were there, so there's a couple of things that I think we missed. When it came back up, getting updated, um, like the um. Because they have access to their employee, their information on employee access, we shouldn't have to give them a paper copy. They have their employee access. They can say, I have two personal days, I have twelve sick days or whatever. And then I think just some of the, the wording from one, um, from the professional staff to the first um, support staff. Just didn't get fully switched over to matching language where for the most part of the language is the same.
So, do you say which language that is?
Um, so let's see, so that one, and then, so, under forty-four thirty-two. Uh, the part in, there's, let's see, so probably three-fourths of the way down the, down the page, right above sick leave, a sick leave. It should say date of employment of the first contract year. So it's each member of the support staff employed on a full-time basis shall be entitled to four days of sick leave as of the first day of employment of the first contract year, not each contract year.
Yeah.
I think that was the only thing. And then the bottom, um, what was I thinking about that? Each, uh, where it says each twelve. Month employee shall accrue one sick leave day per month. Each school year employee shall accrue one and one-third. I think it actually, because we did four, I think it's actually a full day each month, not one and a third now, right? Yeah, so then that should say um, one day, not one and a third days. Um. And then once again, um, number three on the, the next page should be, will be available under the employee access, not in accounting and writing. Because that's part of the benefit of the employee access is not to have to give them a paper copy of it.
So, so, yeah, it'd be, we went through it and went through each one of them.
Yes.
So I'm just gonna update.
Just those, those couple of things. So we'll, we'll work on the latest updates, make sure that's available for the.
Anything else that's?
I think that was it.
That, that was it on this stuff?
Okay, well, quick, quick question on um. Over here, oh, entrance age. Do we ever, I know we discussed three-year-old kindergarten at one point, just real quick. We didn't like really discuss it, we just kinda brought it up on time. And I know Minon does it. Do they do well with it? I just, I'm just wondering if they do well with it or not.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure on the numbers and I have to talk to Scott. However. Um, I would say that you can run a three-K program, but it's going to be almost identical to your daycare.
Okay.
Because right now, uh, our four-K program, each student, uh, we receive sixty percent of student funding.
Okay.
For each four-K student and the requirement is we have to do eighty-seven and a half hours of family engagement in order to get that sixty percent.
And once it, is it basically the same thing if you did three-year-old?
No, zero.
Zero, we don't get anything.
You get nothing, that's why I'm saying it, it, it operates like a daycare. You, you, you get nothing from the state now, so.
Okay.
So. So yes, we can look at that, but.
Well, no, I, I was gonna say, if we could pull in something from it and then open up some daycare room, whatever, but yeah.
Right, no.
Then, yeah, if it's not gonna help us and we already got a daycare going, then let's forget it.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't say anything, never mind.
Sounds good.
Moving on.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, in my readings of this week, on some of the other policies, there's one policy that says Wednesday, the sports have to be done at five, there's some other ones that says.
Okay, let's get after that, so, because there, there's, there's um.
Is it policy or handbook versus policy?
So there's a coach handbook and uh, I, I think that that's some, if, let's get together and make sure we get that, because I, I know we did chat quite a bit about this. Two years ago, uh, just trying to get clarity on, on, on the coach's handbook, so, yeah, let's do that. So thank you for looking at that, so.
All right, Start College Now, college first applications. Are there actual applications here or are these just the blank ones that need to be done?
Those are actual applications.
All right.
So, um, just some stuff to consider and take a look at. Um, and if there are specific questions on any of them, please let me know or, you know, and or myself. Um. I will say that, just a reminder that um, with Start College Now, Start College Now is through the tech college system. Only resident districts can approve, resident districts have to approve those, whether they attend here or not. Versus early college credit, it's the enrolled district that covers those, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, so if somebody enroll though?
If, if somebody open enrolled though, we are not a, we are not obligated to approve early college credit.
Okay.
But we are obligated to approve Start College Now. To have that difference.
Yeah, I know, what's the difference?
So, that, that's.
It will cost us money.
Right, so that, that's where it might get kinda confusing if, if you see.
Or is it mainly, I wonder if it's more because they figure that some of those, because it's coming from the tech college, some of those classes will be more. In school versus, there'd be more accessibility within high school versus in the college?
Uh, that, that is a good question. All I know is that it is written into Wisconsin State statute. Therefore, that's what we.
All right, so.
All right.
All right, football athlete transportation in August, oh boy.
So, we've got great topics going on. So, uh, one thing I will say that. Uh, out of all of our co-op sports, football is the odd one out. Why do I say that? All of our co-op sports, we have coaches that are employed by the district and can provide transportation. We have, in my time, we've advertised for a football coach for the district. To no avail, we have none. Therefore, these, these students, unlike other sports, do not get that, that transportation. And I, I know we've had uh, some people step up and volunteer to drive them, but, you know, and I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. If, if we, if we had a, a coach that was employed by the district, that person would be available for transport, but that's not the case, so. Just bringing it for consideration for, for you to look at and so, and consider, so.
I thought we already covered that at a meeting and it had passed, uh, because I have a note on my desk about August. Transportation.
We agreed that we would provide, we would offer that, man, but I don't think we talked about.
Compensation.
Compensation and all that. That was, that was all left out, so.
I thought you said that we would provide a bus driver for, because I think I told Mark that.
Going through, we can take a look at it, but going through that process, if we're hiring that, how do we put this out? And covering this.
Well, I think you'd have to be out with two or bus drivers to start with.
Right, but we didn't finalize this. Because I, I, I wanna take a look at, you know, is, if we're doing this, how we.
How many football players do we usually have?
Uh, this year's our biggest year, I think.
I wanna say, for some reason, I'm thinking eighteen, I'm thinking like ten, and it swapped, usually it's more middle school and I think it was more high school this year.
So, but they don't, they don't usually go at the same time though, right?
That's correct. The middle school starts.
So we wouldn't need a bus per se, you could use on the fifteen-passed or vans. What about, what about, oh, they're ten.
Yeah.
Close enough. Um. What about our, because I know we have van drivers for other things, what about just trying to schedule a van driver almost?
Well, and we don't, we don't have a separate van driver hired generally. It's the, it's, when we had special ed students, then we had a, a one, but we haven't had anybody that requires transportation from sped right now.
Okay.
So we don't have, okay, I'm lying, Donnie is still, was designated as that, so we could maybe use him to come in and see if he could transport that, van-wise. But otherwise, it was, um, it would go to the bus drivers first and then out from there, is generally when it came to the transportation. And the van was a whole different.
Right, I, I guess that's, th- this is stuff, it's still very murky and I wanna make sure we're clear on, on how we're doing this.
Yeah.
And, and how we're compensating. Is that just the transport? Is that transport time sitting there, you know, I mean, it's putting this all together here, so.
We, um. I was just wondering, like, because we like have the event, like if a, a staff member works in it, like a sporting event, it would just be a flat fee.
Mm-hmm.
Situation like that.
Right, and that.
Might.
Instead of all of it for the time sitting there.
It might be because.
Well, and that, and that's, that's my math.
And I guess it depends, then it depends on like if it's a practice game or dropping them for an away game type of thing.
Well, games, that's, that's a different story because then we're, we're doing the transportation for it, so then it's definitely a bus driver.
Okay.
But this is strictly practices.
Yeah, okay.
Because the, the other piece of this, when you start talking about games and, and bus drivers, bus drivers get paid for the duration that they're there.
Yeah.
Right, and that, and it varies depending on where they're at, right? So, again, coming back and laying out what, what are the parameters for, for this compensation if we're gonna do that? And who's eligible and, and what, what are we asking for?
I do like that state, you know, just a set amount, like a game night thing.
Right, which, which is just fine, but that, that's the stuff that I wanna put.
And we did like when, um, when we had fewer players for like volleyball and they've taken vans because we're shorthanded on drivers and they, the coaches have taken vans to their games. And we have paid them for just their drive time. Because we did knock out the driver.
How many kids from Northwood are on a team?
I have no idea.
I'd have to get back to you on that. So do we bus them to home games too then?
No.
No. Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of, so. Well.
That's a good question.
So that's what I need, is more questions.
Probably not.
But I, I don't think we do.
Because we don't, because the, the games start later, it's just like a basketball game, we don't try and, sport, like come back to school in a basketball game.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good question.
All right.
Do you guys have other questions on this?
So right now, they weren't, they can't take a van, there's too many of them, right?
Yeah, that's correct. There were too many to be on a van, so.
Or is it, is it ten? Because I'm trying to think, because um, Nathan has drove them down to practices, taken the van.
Yeah.
See, I think it's eleven, because you've got the driver, passenger front, and then three seats of three, right?
It's ten total with driver.
It is.
Ten total with driver, yeah, yeah.
So, oh, that first seat must be only a two-passenger seat then.
That's a sure.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, well, moving on. All right.
Yeah, man. And.
Are you on the Baird?
It is.
Yes.
Baird, yeah.
Baird.
Um, all right, so. It's, it's, it's something that I brought up previously and, and I'm gonna kinda stick to this, that, you know, a- as we start taking a look at, at our facilities and considering options. On what we're doing in the future, I, I think it's in our best interest to take a look at what the financial outlook for the district looks like for the next five years. And, and Leanne is phenomenal, but that's, that's way too far. Um, and I think having some assistance with, with these analytic models, um, would be extremely beneficial. Um. The, the, the nice thing for, when I first came on as superintendent, they provided some of this stuff, uh, free of charge for the first few months of my time. So I was able to dabble in it a little bit and understand it. Um, and I will say it is, it's very beneficial. You can really get a good look at to, as to where, where you are as a district and where, where you're headed. Uh, and they would provide, um, you know, support with it and, and help describe it. Uh, the, the fellow that I've been working with, he's, um, he was a finance person with Milwaukee Public Schools, has not been for a little bit, so, anyway. So, so not contributing to the current situation there, but anyway, he knows business finance and, uh, was saying that. If, if we were to take a look at something, he would strongly suggest the budget model. He knows business finance, and, uh, I was saying that i- if we were to take a look at something, he would strongly suggest the budget model. And if we went anywhere else, it would be analytics, cuz the analytics would really give us, you know, more detailed information, uh, from districts around us, so we can do some comparison models and whatnot, so, anyway.
So are you looking at, what, the six grand one then?
Uh, what.
Cuz that's budget forecast and school analytics?
He said that, what I'd be looking at is the, you know, the budget model and the analytics, so, yes, it would decrease to that six thousand dollars, but eh, he, his recommendation is, is just doing the budget model for sure, so.
What, have you ever used a video library? Is it worth anything?
Uh.
Is it worth a thousand dollars?
It does provide that quick access to things and, and to explain different things, but I, I can't say that it's necessarily worth that, so.
Do you guys have questions on this?
And this is, like, where it would just be you receiving the training, or is it access to, like, other?
It's, he, the, this, uh, Marquez is the fellow, he said, he can jump on, he can have a meeting with me, he can have a meeting with me and, and you and whatnot, and explain different things, go through it, so it's not just me, so.
Okay.
The district would be purchasing, so.
Is this an annual, or like?
It is an annual.
We, we do it once for good for five years?
It gives us a picture of five, for five years, and we, we, we wouldn't have to continue that, but I, I think getting a snapshot of where we're at you know, as, i- if we truly look at going into a facilities, uh, thing, I think it is within our best interest to see where we're at five years operationally.
So is there extra cost if you wanted more than one person to attend these jobs?
It's, it's a district package, so.
Well, that's why I was wondering, cuz I mean, there's some, you know, budget forecast workshops and.
Uh, yes, anything with Baird, there's a, there's a cost that goes to it, but, but I would say with, with this, uh, you get a lot of support that goes with it, so.
All right, do you guys have any questions?
If you wish, I mean, I can talk to him and see if he wants to, if he can present more information on it as well.
That might be a good idea, though.
Okay, I'll talk to him on it, so.
Doesn't hurt to have more information. All right. Right, you keep skipping clo- are we, do we have, do we have anything in closed session?
Yeah, there is nothing in closed session, this.
Oh, so there's only one le- thing left to do, ladies and gentlemen?
I'll make a motion.
At seven fifteen? You're seconding?
Yep, I was just yawning.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you, everybody, for your time. Have a good night. You're just gonna give this to?
Yep.
Okay. Tell them.